Okay, good evening, everyone. We're going to reconvene our open session. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. And I'd like to ask trustee Wright to report out actions taken in closed session.
We had one action in closed session. On a six to zero vote with trustee Pendergrass absent, the board approved the resignation of the dean of fine arts and media technology at Saddleback College.
Thank you, trustee Wright. And now I'd like to ask trustee Jay to lead us in the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Our heavenly father, as our year comes to a conclusion, we bow our heads in gratitude for the wonderful faculty, administrators, and staff who have worked so hard to educate our students. We are grateful for our beautiful facilities, campus, and grounds. We are most grateful for our students. We also thank you so much for the community support in our efforts to provide quality education and workforce development. We thank you for the unselfish giving of the many people, groups, and businesses who have made our scholarship programs so successful. Heavenly father, please be with the board tonight to help us make proper, wise, and righteous decisions for the future direction of the district and students. We ask that you be with this nation so we can come together as one and work together for freedom, fairness, and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you for that. Please join with me in reciting our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Now, we have an opportunity to do something fun. We have a new member of the diocese up here. And because of president Pendergrass's absence, I have the absence. I have the honor of swearing in our new student trustee, Martha Uriarte. So I think we're going to move to the podium over there, if you'll join with me. Everything's on? All right. Ready?
Ready.
Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Martha Uriarte.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support.
No, go ahead.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of the state of California.
And Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. That was good. Okay. So we're at 2.5. We do have three requests for public comments. And we ask that in making your comments, you can find your remarks two minutes. Would appreciate you doing that. And first, and the podium here to my left is where you come up and speak. And the first person that will be speaking this evening is Ann Klett, Kajoyne Kado? Am I pronouncing the first name? How do you say your first name?
Calvin.
Sorry?
Calvin.
Calvin?
Calvin.
Oh. You're, it's all right. So do I. You're next.
Okay.
Please.
I'm here to ask that you reconsider the funding for the art gallery that is being cut. It's important that the students get a chance to take and display their art and sell their art, and that's done through the art gallery. And by cutting it, you take out a whole section of what we learned to do in art. I'm a student there, and I just displayed for the first time this year. And it was a very rewarding thing to display my art. So I'm asking that you reconsider funding that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Calvin, you are next. And after Calvin, our last speaker, who's requested to speak, is Diane Sussman.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I too am concerned about the closing of the gallery for all of next year. That would be akin to closing the McKinney Theater or the football stadium or any other of the areas where the students are able to display what they do in the best form they can. The last show was the student show. I don't remember seeing any of you there. If you were there, fine. I appreciate that very much. I had to leave early. I went to the student show opening at Newport Harbor High School, where I mentored students there. That was quite a reception there. There were at least 1,000 people attending. Of course, they offered food and music. We offered music here also. But that was quite a difference between here and there. And when you don't have funding for the students to display their work or the faculty to see what they do or invited artists, it really hurts. My concern is not fostering humanities. People lose their ability to express themselves. When you look back at all the shootings we've had. I was in San Bernardino the day before the mass shooting there. I lost a second cousin at the Orlando massacre in the nightclub. You have Timothy McVeigh, all of these kinds of things going on. These folks don't have any way to express themselves. And they are very narrow-minded. Maybe they were raised that way. When you can't express yourself in some other way, then terrible things happen. A faltering artist was Adolf Hitler. Look where that went. And I hate to see this happen to one of the best places in the entire country to be and be educated and live, South County. That's my take on what's going on. I'm a retired person. I came back to school to continue what I've always wanted to do, which is the arts, in particular ceramics. Now we can't do that anymore in this public venue, which, of course, our taxes are paying for. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Please reconsider. Next up is Diane Sussman.
I'm Diane Sussman. I've been taking classes here since about 1987, 1988. I have enough credits to justify a four-year degree. However, I have a couple of those already, so I don't think Saddleback really adds to the prestige of my background. Through the years, I've seen a lot of changes, a lot of, what I would say, mistaken directions that this college has taken. The biggest one that comes to mind right now is this new $55 million sports stadium. When is this endless fascination with sports going to stop? And it's not just 55 million at the outset. What is the proposed expenditure each year for the sod, the field maintenance, the watering, the texturing, the mowing of the lawn? How about the lighting cost? And most of all, how about the parking? Parking through the years has always been a hassle here. Diminished enrollment now has eliminated that problem. I used to not be able to get into my classes because I could cruise for 45 minutes, unable to find a parking space. So I would go home in despair. Now I can come the first week of class, if I'm enrolled in a class here, and slide into a space without any problems. Something's very wrong here. In the art department, which is what I am most familiar with, having taken jewelry and ceramics classes until being termed out, I have noticed through the years that recently a lady was feted and awarded for her theatrical achievements that started at Saddleback College Arts Department. The comic strip drabble was created by a former Saddleback College student. I don't know of any football players of note who have come out of this program. Friends of mine have taken classes here and progressed through the art gallery to exhibiting their work, selling their work, and now they are in public galleries, selling their work. That is because of this college. We've spent funds for yet another cluster of LED lighting signs. I thought the first set was a waste of money. The second set is even a bigger set. Do we need to buy yet another set in five years of bulletin boards advertising? A diminished college with a large football stadium? The art gallery should not only not be closed, but the school should offer a program in gallery management. Students could learn on the job the business of art. They could, under the auspices of such a program, there would be greater student involvement, gainful knowledge of the business of art, and it would be a service to the college and community. Where can art students display their work? Mom and dad's fridge doesn't cut it anymore. Can we teach biology without labs? Can we teach computer science with blackboards? It's time to think of the arts as not an unwanted stepchild or does not lead to immediate dollars and cents. There's an unspoken prestige to having an art program on a campus. Art raises the cultural profile of an academic institution.
Ms. Sussman.
It adds prestige to the community enhancements and enhances the visibility to people who are otherwise unaware of this institution.
Can I ask you to wrap up, please?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Let's, moving on, let's see, any other requests for public comments? None? Okay, let's move on to board reports. And I'm going to start out on my right with trustee Lang.
Thank you. Obviously, this is a very gratifying time of the year for those of us here sitting up at the rostrum. We've got a lot of events in which our students are graduating and moving on. Some of the ones that I attended recently were the nurses' pinning ceremony, the veteran awards ceremony, in which Mayor Greg Raths was the keynote speaker and just did an absolutely terrific job. And then also, I attended the economic presentation by Tony Tang and Lagoon and Nagel. But the thing I really wanted to talk about, believe it or not, was my recent vacation in Hawaii. And I'll explain to you how this ties in with Saddleback College in just a minute. We had a wonderful time, of course. One of the things that we did was we went out on the ocean with an experienced fishing captain. Just so happened that his son attended Saddleback College, was a volleyball player, apparently quite good. Didn't know what he wanted. Perfect kind of student that comes to Saddleback College to find himself, and that's exactly what this student happened to do. Went on to another four-year institution and has gone on from there to a very successful career. Really, that's the reason why I've been a trustee for 22 years, is to hear stories like that with how our students have benefited from the wonderful education that they've gotten here, both at Saddleback College and at Irvine Valley College. Very gratifying. And just another example of the kind of people that you run into in just your everyday activities and the importance of community colleges. Thank you.
Thank you for that, trustee Lang. Trustee Jay.
Congratulations to all those students who will graduate this Friday. We are grateful for all the professors, the staff, administrators, for working so hard in behalf of our students. Since the last board meeting, I have attended several meetings and events related to the district. On Tuesday, April 23rd, I attended the IVC Foundation Board of Governors meeting. Also that day, I participated in the 2019 Economic Report Luncheon at the Laguna Hills Community Center. The introduction to the program was given by Dr. Elliot Sterns and the dean of Advanced Technology and Applied Sciences at Saddleback College, Anthony Tang, gave the economic report. This was very well attended, and the report was given by Dean Tang. It was excellent. On Wednesday, April 24th, I attended the University of California IVC Engineering Academy Open House and Information Session at the IDEA Building in ATEP. The meeting was extremely informative. The keynote speaker was Dr. Gregory Washington, dean of the UCI Samuel School of Engineering. Perspective students and parents were in attendance and were all ready to sign up. The interesting thing that I found out, that if you attended UCI your first year, the tuition would be $13,000 a year. If you came to the IVC, campus is only $1,500. The thing that was interesting to me is that when you came to the IVC program, there were smaller classes and that they would help you choose which kind of engineering you wanted to go into. And I didn't realize there were so many different types of engineering that IVC would help you transfer into. There's aerospace engineering, biomedical engineering, biomedical engineering pre-med, chemical engineering, civil engineering, computer engineering, electrical engineering, environmental engineering, material science engineering, and mechanical engineering. Glenn, 200 students will be admitted to that program?
Actually, at the current time, it looks like it'll be less than 70. This is a number that's determined by UCI, and so they have to estimate how many they can take in after the two years. So it'll continually grow slightly. But I think, just guessing, we'll be around maybe 65. I'm not sure what our current number is right now.
Well, this was so informative. It was an excellent evening. I enjoyed it so much. Then Friday, April 26th, I attended the fundraiser for the GAP 4+1 Business Leadership Speakers Series. The speaker was the son of the former president Ronald Reagan, and it was Michael Reagan. My guest was a former South Orange County Community College District trustee, John Williams. I got to meet and converse with Mr. Reagan. He spoke on the topic "Success Comes From Failure." The talk was on some of his own life experiences. And his theme was "When One Door Closes, Another One Will Open." An interesting aspect of this, several times, he spoke in his father's voice. And I kind of felt sorry for those younger students because they wouldn't realize that he was mimicking his father's voice. On May 3rd, I attended and hosted some guests at the Saddleback College Wind Ensemble Concert. It was very good, and I very much enjoyed it, but not well-attended by the community. I believe we need to consider more advertising to make the community aware of the excellent programs that we offer at the colleges. On Tuesday, May 7th, I attended the College Nursing Program Pinning Ceremony in the McKinney Theater. This was a great event with 54 nurses graduating. This event was very touching, as each graduate had a few words for the appreciation of those who helped them through this rigorous program. Their stories were an inspiration to all of us. On May 9th, I attended the Saddleback College Veterans Program End of the Year Celebration. The keynote speaker was Greg Raths, mayor of Mission Viejo, and a veteran of 30 years in the United States Marine Corps, where he served as a fighter pilot, and he also was chief of staff and financial officer of the White House Military Office. Awards were given for the transferring and graduating veteran students. The special awards were Student Veteran Service Award, Veteran Academic Performance of the Year, the Courage Award, the Female Veteran of the Year Award, the Student Veteran Alumni of the Year Award, and the Student Veteran of the Year. We are grateful for our veterans and are proud of that our district has such an active and vibrant program for them under the leadership of Terrence Nelson, the vets coordinator and veteran counselor. Thanks, Terrence, for the wonderful job you do. And thanks to all our veterans for the service in the community. On May 10th, I attended the Saddleback Foundation Board of Governors Cocktail Hour at the Dana Point Yacht Club. And on May 15th, I attended the IVC Scholarship Ceremony at the IVC Live Oak Terrace. Over $500,000 in scholarships were awarded to the students. I was so thrilled to be at the event as they presented the Doctors William and Barbara J. District Trustees Endowment Scholarship and to meet the student who received the scholarship. A big thanks to Alyssa Oransky, the IVC Foundation Director. She does a wonderful job. On Friday, May 17th, I attended the Saddleback Scholarship Award Ceremony. The Dr. William Bill J. Memorial Scholarship was presented, and I was disappointed that the winner of the scholarship wasn't present. A big thanks to those who worked so hard to make this event a huge success. There were 486 scholarships given to deserving students. Our donors not only include members of our community and businesses, but also the Saddleback alumni, faculty, and staff. Thank you to all those generous donors.
Thank you, trustee Jay. And I want to thank you for your generous contributions to both foundations. My report, I attended the Mission Viejo City Council recognition of our community college district with Chancellor Burke, Elliot Stern, and Latisha Clark from our Public Affairs Department. This was the last of a multi-city tour, if you will, of recognizing the work of our district and our two colleges and the city of Mission Viejo. And the council was very gracious, allowing all of us to speak, myself and Chancellor Burke and Dr. Stern. I did also attend the UCI IVC Engineering Collaborative. I won't go into details. That has happened. It was nice to speak there. Terrific turnout. Great to see all the parents and students present there. And let's hope it works out in the fashion that you guys believe at IVC. The Economic Coalition Presentation by Tony Tang on the state of the South County economy. I also attended some mixed reports, I think, for our long-term prognosis here in the county, matching wages particularly with housing costs. So it's something somewhat beyond our control, but hopefully we can try to make some improvements in that area. Last week, I attended here at Saddleback College with Chancellor Burke and Dr. Stern. We welcomed the Chair of the Orange County Board of Supervisors, Lisa Bartlet. She is our supervisor. She represents this area. The county has a $6 billion budget. Oversees a lot of activities in the county, including parks and the Medi-Cal program, Public Works. We did take her on a tour of the Saddleback College Health Center with Gina Harris-Callwell. And Lisa asked a lot of good questions, and we may find some ways to collaborate with them, particularly in the area of healthcare. The IVC and Saddleback College Scholarship ceremonies were terrific. You don't have a heart if you weren't moved by them. The stories are impressive, amazing, inspirational, and really manifest why we all do what we do. And I'm sorry I'm going to miss commencements this year. I was supposed to be there first time in seven years, but my daughter is graduating from her college in the Philadelphia area this weekend, so that's why I missed commencements here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Wright.
I attended a number of events this last month. In fact, it's about 10 events. I'm not going to talk about all of them because some of them have already been mentioned in great detail. But on April 29th, I was able to attend the kimono tea ceremony that was at Irvine Valley College for a special dedication and a traditional Japanese tea ceremony. These events were made possible through the vital partnership of the Irvine Rotary. On Wednesday, May 1st, I attended the Beautiful Boy/Author Event. This was held at Saddleback College, where they read the book Beautiful Boy, A Father's Journey Through His Son's Addiction. And this is the book right here that was read. In fact, I was able to get the author to autograph it with his signature right here. So a wonderful event. It was well-done. And it, I think, was an important event. On Wednesday, May 1st, I attended the IVC Newly Attended and Tenured Track Faculty Reception. I also attended the 2019 Nursing Pinning Ceremony. Always a wonderful event. Thursday, May 9th, I attended the Campus Community Recognition Celebration at Irvine Valley College. On Thursday, May 9th, I also attended that same day the Annual Vets Program. It's the 10th annual program, and I haven't missed one yet. I also attended the IVC Scholarship Award. And then finally, this afternoon, I guess at 12 o'clock, I attended the Student Athlete Award Luncheon at Saddleback College Gymnasium. A wonderful event, too. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Wright. Trustee Milchker.
Thank you. First of all, I want to welcome our new student trustee, Martha Uriarte. I know her and know she's going to do a wonderful job as a student trustee and looking forward to working with her. And congratulations on your election and being sworn in. There are so many, as you can hear from the board members, end-of-the-year activities and festivities and award ceremonies that each one was wonderful. And I attended so many of them. I'm just going to read them all so that I could get through this in two minutes. I'm going to try my best not to editorialize. But just know, every single one of them was wonderful with the great diversity from each one of them. And when I attend them, I know what great work our community colleges do. So first, I helped put on a Passover seder for Saddleback College students, the Saddleback College Economic Report. the Saddleback College Economic Report at the South Orange County Economic Coalition, created by Tony Tang, the IVC-UCI Engineering Academy Open House at ATEP, the Plant Sale at Saddleback College Horticulture Department, a fundraiser for GAPA four-plus-one IVC students, the Newport Film Festival, where I viewed Saddleback College short films, which were fabulous. Sorry, I editorialized. The Saddleback Students Play Dog Sees God, Confessions of a Teenage Blackhead, and the IVC play Arsenic and O'Lease, the IVC Kimono Display, Saddleback College Presentation on Unconscious Bias, Silent Killer of Diversity, Tour of the ATAS Building with Anne Marie Gables, Brandy de Lima, and Nowar Al-Jubari, Tour of ATEP with Anne Marie Gables and Mitani Efrem, Saddleback College One Book One College, IVC Newly Tenured Track Faculty Reception, Orange County School Boards Association Annual Awards Meeting, the SOCA International Festival, the Nurse Pinning Ceremony, Lee Hagerty's Celebration of Life. He was dignified, well-dressed, wonderful instructor, and so many students remember him as their best professor of all. And he had family that came all the way from Dallas to be there. EOPS and CareWorks and Foster Youth End of the Year Celebration, Saddleback College Vest End of the Year Celebration, Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force, where those in the district fought the good fight to oppose AB 1364, particularly Chancellor Burke, Letitia Clark, and Dan Pestalosi. They got that terrible bill defeated. Senior Summit at SOCA University, IVC and Saddleback College Scholarship Ceremony, the IVC Speech Team End of the Year Celebration, the IVC Year Launch Party, and I made an extra donation after I got home, the Saddleback College Biological Science Symposium, where the keynote speaker was a former Saddleback College student doing research in the sleep lab at IVC, who said, "Sleep is the new exercise." Another, and just thought I'd mention that the IVC Women's Volleyball and Women's Beach Volleyball Team each finished third in the state this year, and no other program in the state have medaled in both sports at once. So we do good work at our colleges. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Milchker.
Are you kidding me?
It wasn't quite two minutes, but you tried.
Oh, my God. Okay, sorry. I tried.
I know. Trustee Witt.
Marsha, you make, can you hear? Marsha, you make me feel inferior.
No, no, no.
At any rate, I'm not inferior. I just wanted to say, as I was listening to my colleagues speak, and I look out at the room, I see many of you the same face every month when you come. I want to thank you for coming, the new faces. Welcome. And I remember when I sat on that side and not on this side, and sometimes wondered, my God, will this will ever end? But I want you to know that we are here to make a difference. Just because we sit up here, we make a difference on the ground and up here. I attended the pinning ceremony, which is always dear to my heart. As you know, I was 34 years in that program, and it just gets better. I have to tell you, the stellerness of that program and the way the students speak, you can rest assured, when you get sick, you're going to be in good hands. I also attended the scholarship ceremonies at IVC and at Saddleback. They were great. They really hit home to me, and they hit my pocketbook. And I say that because of what it does for the students. And those that work for Saddleback, those who have attended Saddleback, I want you all to know that if you really want to know where to give, give back to where you came from. And I have to tell you something different, that nobody else, not even you, Marsha, did while this month. When I finished with IVC Scholarship, I came over. I wanted to see that food pantry. Do you know about this food pantry? Our dean of the Health Center and CDC and the Wellness, what that title is, we distributed, what is it, 6,800 pounds of food that day, and 140 people came. And that is picked up at 2:00 a.m., and that is brought fresh to the grounds. And the students that we serve, where our students here at Saddleback at IVC, and, excuse me, and the Emeritus students. And I even found Emeritus students, and we're talking about older students, who took extras, and then they go to senior centers and give to those who are in need. And I love that it is perpetual. It's not just picking up food for your own refrigerator. So I applaud that we are doing this. I applaud that we are addressing the non-academic barriers. I really am. At IVC and here at Saddleback, it is time that we recognize that. And that's all. I went over, didn't I?
You did, but it's all right.
Oh, dang on it.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Witt. And now our newest person at the dais. Welcome again. Congratulations, Student Trustee Uriarte. Am I saying that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you very much, everyone, for, well, to the students for electing me as your current student trustee. I am honored to serve the Board of Trustees and be the liaison between the campuses and administration. The Board of Trustees play a key role in improving the plans and programs that have an impact on the students, and I hope to share more information with my fellow students at both Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. This with the mission to increase awareness and engagement on the campuses. The activities that so far I've been participating are, on May 18, on Saturday, I attend the Scholarship Ceremony, and I had witnessed, for the first time, many students receiving different kinds of scholarships, either for, based on financial aid, financial help. And I have heard many inspirational and motivational stories from students coming from different backgrounds, facing different challenges during childhood, and the different efforts and sacrifices that they keep doing to put themselves into the program and then continue with higher education to improve their income in the future. Today, I attended the College Student Athlete Award Luncheon for the first time also. And I was greatly surprised to see many students and athletes that, to qualify for those scholarships, they have to study at least 12 units per semester, which is a full-time student. And to my surprise, a significant amount of students were recognized for keeping a 4.0 GPA. I couldn't help but just to ask myself how they do it, you know? To be a full-time student and have an athletic schedule, training, competition, representing college, and maintaining a 4.0 GPA, it's not an easy task. So again, thank you very much to my friends from Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College for electing me. And my mission these years is to serve as the voice of the students and represent their interests, aspirations, goals, and goals to the Board of Trustees. I would like to be the bridge between the colleges and encouraging enhanced communication among students. And I hope to encourage and educate and share more information about the role of the Board of Trustees with the students, with the hopes that students may gain a greater appreciation for the effort that the Board puts to advocate for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Chancellor Burke.
So you have my written report, so I won't go over those items again. I'd like to welcome Trustee Uriarte and say I'm really looking forward to the first commencements I'll be going through with Saddleback College and Irvine Valley.
Thank you for that. We're on to college presidents' reports. Looks like Irvine Valley College going first.
Well, thank you very much. I'm going to do a similar thing, actually, that our chancellor has done, but this is indeed the season for celebration. I think, I was trying to keep track of the number of events that you all have attended, and lost track, I think, around 30, 35 or so. So just to say thank you for attending those. Much appreciated that you're there. Wanted to say welcome to Martha, and congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
And if you look at the end of the table down here, you'll find Matthew Rossborough. And he is the IVC ASG president. And what you see sitting there is a motivated and dedicated leader. I have really enjoyed working with him this year. He's attended most of our meetings. And I can tell you that he has given me a lot more than I have offered him. So this is his last meeting, and I just wanted to say thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Saddleback College.
Well, now I have to call out Perry Mead, as if I wasn't going to anyway. Perry has done a stellar job for us as ASG president. He has single-handedly pushed a lot of non-academic barrier issues for us, including transportation in ongoing negotiations with the OCTA for a bus pass, and we're really grateful, and I've been glad to get to know him and look forward to hearing from him. I want to thank all the trustees for attending the various events. It is a busy time of year for all of us, and we appreciate that you make the time to honor our students and help our administrators understand and faculty and staff the work that they do and how important it is. I do want to add one event to the board report, and that is the event that was alluded to by Trustee Wright and Trustee Uriarte, who just attended that this afternoon, and that was the athletic event. The number, Trustee Uriarte, I was struck by two. We had the same reaction. It was 34 of our athlete students had 4.0s. 34 students had 4.0s. So I asked myself, as you did, what's that all about, especially while maintaining a full-time load? And I think there's something to be learned there that we want to focus on in the year ahead. As we look at all the national referenda and initiatives and state mandates, there are many things we want to do to make our students more successful, but the secrets may be within our own reach. They may be within our own programs and modeling the kinds of things that we do in athletics with cohort formation, community formation, giving students a tribe that they belong to, as well as coaching, which is essentially intrusive support, intrusive advising. So I think it's a model we want to look at very carefully because our athlete students are very successful, and we would love to spread that to all. So thank you all, and we look forward to seeing as many of you as we can on Friday.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Being consistent, I guess we'll start off with ASG IVC.
Evening trustees and Chancellor Burke. This is my last meeting, and I did want to say a thank you as well to my ASG advisor, to President Rockmore, to the Board of Trustees, and all of these shared governance leaders who welcomed me into their meetings, allowed me to share my voice on behalf of the students. And I definitely learned a lot of invaluable information that has made not only IVC, that hasn't made IVC just a stepping stone to future success, but foundational to that future success. So for that, I have to say thank you very much. And to report, there isn't too much to report, as we did convene for the year two weeks ago, but we did approve standing committees for the mental health and wellness. That will continue, as well as we ad hoc committees for transportation in continuance of our partnership with OCTA. As well, we are reinitiating the mascot re-identification process, as well as the Taviana Smith Emergency Fund. And in addition, we are planning for the Student Activity Center expansion. As to the amount of space yet, that is not known, but we are planning to hopefully host a multicultural safe space there, as well as new equity, student leader, and club offices. And we've also been, myself and our VP of Budget, have been presenting to the different shared governance groups this week in preparation for the budget presentation that we will do shortly after this. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to miss you. Do you want to say anything about what you're going to do next? You don't have to. Okay.
Transferring.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Perry, you're next.
I would just like to, although this is my last meeting as well, and I would like to thank the ASG advisor at Saddleback College, Chris Hargreaves, who's here today. I would also like to thank Dr. Elliot Stern for your guidance and mentorship in the six months that you've been here, and to Blake Stevens and other members of Saddleback College community that have been mentors to me. And I have cherished their guidance. I look forward to continue learning from them in the future. ASG, we wrapped up, we had our bank win recognition of volunteer hours and giving certificates to people, all the ASG hard work that students put in this year. We had that a couple of weeks ago. And since the last Board of Trustees meeting, we also had an ASG leadership team go with Letitia to Sacramento, in which they advocated for bills SB 291 and a couple of other assembly bills. And they got to meet with Senator Leva and Senator Pat Bates, Assembly Member Cadi Pichin Norris, and other officials up in Sacramento to advocate on behalf of the district and on behalf of students in the district. So that was really exciting. We also had our budget forms and requests that were submitted for the end of last year. That was a couple of weeks ago, and we've been preparing our budget, which we'll be presenting later in this meeting. And then we've also, right now, is our last thing for the year. We are working with our LRC, and we've been having extended library hours, including having the library open on Saturday for students that they can come in and study. And we're calling it like a cram-a-thon, where we're providing food and coffee for them to study during finals. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Should I say something about Perry? We had the Saddleback College Scholarship Ceremony on Friday, and Perry served as the emcee. And you did a fantastic job. And also, in addition to emceeing the ceremony, he pinch-hit the naming of, I think, over 100 scholarship donors and did it flawlessly. So thanks for stepping up for that. All right, we're moving on. We have two discussion items. And, oh, excuse me. Do we have any board requests for reports? I didn't believe we did, but seeing none, now we'll move on to 4.0. And like the students just said, we're going to discuss, first up, is the adoption of the tentative IVC and Saddleback College ASG budgets. Who's going to go first? Or do you go concurrently? Rock, paper, scissors?
Good evening, trustees. Wait, is, good evening, trustees. I'm Perry Mead. I'm the Saddleback ASG president.
And I am Jake Ribzik. I'm the Director of Budget and Finance and the president-elect.
And this is our fiscal year 2019-2020 tentative budget presentation. So some of our budget highlights include that we have $150,000 coming in for our beginning balance for the fiscal year 2019-2020. And that comes from a carryover from the 2018-2019 fiscal year that includes increased money that we received from our opt-out for the purchasing of the ASG stamp. That includes also money that was not spent in categorical spending towards our student development office, because we hired a position on like 1/3 into the year, so we saved money doing that. And then that also comes from divisions that didn't spend money that was allocated, and also a couple of ASG funds that carried over, as well as increased funding that we got later, like about midway through the year, that we found out we had from our contract with the bookstore. We have also for fiscal year 2019-2020, a projection of $125,000 in stamp sales, which last year, because this was our first year having our opt-out thing, we had originally, like ASG usually gets about, projects $50,000 from stamp sales. And this past year, in our adopted budget, we projected about $75,000. And we're very pleasantly surprised to find that we received way more than the $75,000 that we had projected, and the opt-out's been working very well. So we have a conservative estimate of about $125,000 in projected stamp sales revenue coming in for ASG next year.
And then for our last two highlights that we have, we're very excited about our contracted revenue. Just before going into that, it's important to note that ASG gets 40.72% of contracted revenue. So the way that that's going to break down is we're anticipating $223,000 in bookstore revenue and $29,000 in food services revenue. And the way that breaks down is that's the vending machine revenue, the coffee cart revenue, and the revenue which we get from our cafeteria. And then another great highlight that we have is, just like yours in the past, we're very excited to commit 20% of our total funds towards scholarships. So that means we're funding the Promise Program, Child Development Center, Foundation, and Financial Aid Book Scholarships. Okay, and then just to kind of briefly go over our tentative budget. For our sources of funds, we are planning on getting 100, or we're anticipating getting $125,000 in stamp sales revenue, 223 in bookstore contract revenue, $29,000 in our food services revenue, and then 125,000 in our stamp sales. Overall, we're anticipating on having a budget for next year of $528,000.
And then for a point of clarification, too, in case you're wondering about what the bookstore contract increase is, when we met with our fiscal office last year to go over our adopted budget for the fiscal year 2018-2019, we had come to the conclusion, after meeting with our fiscal office, that we would be receiving $201,000 through our contract. But then about midway through the year, our fiscal office got back to us and said, there's actually, they looked at the contract again, and that there was potential actually, they looked at the contract again, and that there was potential to get more money than we have with our contract with the bookstore. So that money, that midway through the year increased to $223,000, which some of that money then is going into the beginning balance for next year's ASG budget.
Yeah, and then I guess I'll just kind of briefly go over our uses of funds. You know, year, it really depends on the year, but our requests just kind of depend on what we're getting and what, you know, we're funding. So that's why a lot of, you see a lot of the changes. But three changes that I want to highlight and go over are the campus life funding change. There is an increase there. That's because we're committing some more money for campus life programs that students can access over the summer. Also, with more money, that means we're going to commit more money to scholarships. So that's a $26,000 increase, and we're extremely proud of that. And then finally, for our emergency reserve, we decided to give 8% of our total funds to that category, and that's coming out to $42,000. And in years past, we've done 10%, and that gives us that same amount. So we think 8%, you know, the same, similar 42, or 42,000, we're comfortable with that number. So those are the three major changes in our total uses of funds. And, yeah, is there anything else you'd like to add, Perry?
I would just like to add, ASG takes a lot of pride, and we're really excited to be able to provide $26,000 extra in funding for scholarship programs. After many of you attended the scholarship ceremony at Saddleback on Friday, May 17th, it was really inspiring to see exactly how much scholarships can impact the lives of students, and hearing a lot of those students' stories, and seeing how many students were able to benefit because of those scholarships. So we're really excited to be able to provide more funding towards scholarships next year. So, ASG began the year with some very high achieving goals, and I'm very proud and excited to say that we met and exceeded a lot of those. So, in fall of 2018, we placed a lot of emphasis on civic engagement, and we worked with a lot of outside groups and clubs, including the Pre-Law Society at Saddleback College, the AAUW, the League of Women Voters, and other organizations. And we hosted a candidate forum on campus, in which we had over 300 students attend McKinney Theater, and we had candidates running from city council to state assembly and state senate to the US Congress, and students got to meet with these candidates and learn about elected officials or candidates running for elected office in their area. And then we also, throughout the course of the semester, by working with outside organizations and other campus partners, were able to register estimated over 1,000 students to vote. And then also, we are one of the only community colleges in Orange County to have an early voting, like, a single early voting station on campus. And with that, we had a Don't Go to Vote event on Halloween, in which we had fun activities, and we had current shoes to come out to vote, partnering with outside organizations. And we had 315 individuals vote in one day on campus, which beat UC San Diego's early voting, like, day. So we took a lot of pride in that. And then another huge issue in, like, area that we've been hammering in on is tackling non-academic barriers. And we are very proud of the work we've done that, including we created an official ASG ad hoc affordable housing committee. We, and through that committee, we also have right now, and it's an ongoing survey, which we've already garnered 3, 3,400 responses from students, and we're hoping to get more as finals, and people are checking their emails for, like, final grades and all that. And then we, ASG's, Jake, and next year's ASG is looking forward to presenting those findings that we found on housing and basic need surveys from students to you at a future board of trustees meeting. We also attended in December the Real 114 Housing Food Securities Conference at Compton College, in which a lot of our ASG leadership and ASG members are going to be here next year, were able to learn first and from, like, professionals about the impacts that lack of housing, housing securities have, food and securities can have on achievement in college, and have what better ways we can start closing those gaps. So that was really informative to take those and come back here and start advocating for solutions to those issues. And then we also worked with and are currently working with OCTA on a sort of, like, universal bus pass program, in which students will be able to access bus passes that they can take 24/7 all throughout Orange County for, like, very, very small prices. So we're continuing, we're really excited to continue those talks with them and find out a final plan for that, starting next year, or maybe the year after. And then also, we've been doing a lot of work on advocacy issues. So, we, in the beginning of April, we attended the General Assembly for Student Center for California Community Colleges, in which we got to network with a whole bunch of different other community colleges and work on passing resolutions that will then go to the California Community College Chancellor's Office about what benefits students from Saddleback College and all other community colleges. We also received $5,500 in grant money from Pepsi to purchase five additional water bottle refill stations for campus, which coincides with ASG's goal of advocating for environmental sustainability. So we're looking forward to finding, working with facilities to find where we can put those five water bottle refill stations. And unless I'm mistaken, Jake, I think we're going to have the most water bottle refill stations of any college in Orange County.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's cool. And then we also passed a resolution in support of undocumented students and how the college can better help undocumented students, and what resources, like, that we can provide for them. And we also, as I mentioned earlier in my report, we had members of ASG go with Letitia up to Sacramento and advocate for SB 291 and AB 2, and get to meet with our local officials, a couple of them that were at our candidate forum, which was really exciting. So they recognized some of our students, like, hey, wait, we saw you at the candidate forum. That was cool. And then we're looking forward to continue doing this advocacy work next year, as ASG's continues to hopefully go up to Sacramento with Letitia, and advocating for bills that will impact the students. And with that, also having informational sessions and, like, kind of like town hall style meetings with students to inform them about these bills. So these are the ASG highlights. We've also done a lot more, but these are some of the biggest ones of the year. Thank you.
Thank you both. Excellent presentation.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Well, I just had, maybe one brief comment. Excellent presentation, both of you. Clear, concise, fantastic job on the increase in the scholarships. That's, that's so impressive. I just, I noticed, though, there was a little decrease in just, in student support. I'm just curious, what are those funds being used for?
Wait, should I go back? For the student support, the change there, I want to say, like, the majority of that change is just coming from, just last year, we had more requests for programs that didn't request this year. And I would also add that some programs are applying, the category just changed, so that's why there's that shift. Is there anything?
Yeah. So then also, because the student support programs, that comes through when divisions, like, request money from us. So this money, there were some divisions that didn't request money for conference travel, which is what a lot of student support funding goes towards. So that may come at another time late in the year when they request special topic funding for conferences next year.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, but overall, I mean, really, the funding changes year to year. So it's just, what's coming up for that upcoming year?
Okay. Thank you for that. Trustee Melchiker.
First of all, it was a great report, and you, you really have, you and your student, your other students have made such a huge difference this year, in so many things. It's just, like, incredible. And I attended many of the things that you put on, and they, they were just really incredible, and the students supported them so well. And I think it's really wonderful that you're learning that you can make a difference. You did make a difference, and you're learning that you could make a difference, and hopefully you'll go on with your civic involvement the rest of your lives. You'll enjoy that. The question I have is, so did you actually make $50,000 more with the opt-out in the, in the student stamp this year? I mean, that's a huge, a huge difference, so. And this is the first year you had that opt-out, and it did, well, you could answer. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, the, we made, we, in our adopted budget for last year, we projected that we would make maybe, it was a very conservative estimate of $75,000, like, in stamp sales, and we exceeded $125,000 in stamp sales. So the opt-out is working, and that's really good news.
That's great. So not only did you learn about civic involvement, you learned about business involvement, and how to earn, get more money for scholarships in so many of the student programs. So thank you so much. Okay.
All right. Thank you for that. Trustee Lang.
Yes, so I had a couple of questions regarding the, the budget, which is Exhibit A 3 of 4 in our presentation here. As I read this, you've presented the 2018-2019 adopted numbers, but those aren't where we really think the 2018 and 19 numbers are actually going to come out as I, as I'm reading through the, or interpreting your presentation, in that, in fact, bookstore contract revenue will be higher, stamp sale revenue will be higher. Not sure where we're going to come out on the expenses, but if I just looked at the changes numbers and added those to the emergency reserve number, that gets me up to, what, 120,000? So I'm not sure where the rest of the, what the 30,000 difference is to get to your beginning balance number for the 2019-20 tentative budget numbers. Can you maybe run through that with me a little bit?
So, I believe that the extra $30,000 came from the money that wasn't spent towards the categorical funding we had for the Student Development Office, because we hired that position about one-third into the year, so we saved money through that. And then also through some other ASG funds that, like, were not spent, and then division funds that were not spent as well, that came back into the pot.
Okay. All right, that makes, that makes good sense. And then, I guess the other question that I had was substantial increase in campus life funding for this year. And I love seeing, obviously, the increase in scholarship funding, but maybe speak to what the additional student life monies you're anticipating would be used for.
So, the additional funding that we put towards campus life was because we had additional clubs on campus as well. So we hired that new position into the categorical ASG funding group. And then also that we, for over the summer, we wanted to provide more funding for students, because if you're buying or doing the opt-out with the student stamp, we believe that there should be programs over the summer as well, because it is a full-year thing.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, it's really just, there's an increase, I mean, a large portion of it is just an increase that we have on campus life programs. I mean, we know that this campus, you know, on and off is very active, so I think, you know, to his point, it's important that we're supporting students over the summer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Trustee Witt, did you have a question?
Yeah, if someone could, someone can come and get me on the floor. My screen won't work.
Okay. Well, you have the floor.
Okay, well, I have the floor. I just wanted to compliment.
Turn on, turn on your mic.
I wanted to compliment both of you, and I wanted to compliment your team, ASG. Every year, and this year especially, just work so hard, your time, your energy. And again, I have to say, your time. The most precious thing anyone can give me is their time. So thank you for giving your time to Saddleback College and our students.
It was our honor. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you both. Excellent job.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next up is ASG IVC.
I'm Matt Rosber, the ASG president for this year.
And I'm Ian Ruddy. I'm the VP of Budget and Finance. I also have a commissioner here with me, Jay Boo Park.
And we'll be presenting our tentative budget for the fiscal year 2019-2020.
And so just to start off, we've budgeted about $840,000 for the fiscal year 2019-2020, and we are projecting a beginning balance of about $160,000. And as of April 9th, we have about $307,000 in our budget. We are expecting $140,000 in ASIVC access sales of the implementation of opt-out. And that is after, in our sales last year, we were at around $55,000, so we're seeing a pretty significant increase. And the contracted bookstore commission is about 400, is exactly $420,000, and cafeteria commissions are $90,000. And then to go over where our money is going right now, we've actually taken out a significant portion of money from our own funding to put towards co-curriculars and club programs to increase their funding across the board. And we are also, and we are also seeing, and although we have had a reduced number of requests, the money requested is about the same as last year, and we have actually, and due to that, we have projected our money model based off of last year as well.
And I'm going to speak a little bit to the accomplishments we achieved this year. I'm very proud of our organization for doing what it's done and exceeding the goals that we set in the beginning of this year, even through adversity in the middle of the year. I'm going to focus on a few of the things here, two of which being non-academic barriers, which we tried to confront this year. One of such is mental health, a very pressing issue and largely unspoken topic on campus. We're hoping to just change the culture around that and just allow a little bit more awareness. There's always advocacy to take place. And in doing so, we hosted a Student Mental Health Ally Certification Course that was in two parts, and that was conducted in coordination with the Health and Wellness Center from Debbie Hutchinson, who's one of the licensed therapists there. And another academic, or non-academic barrier, rather, that we confronted this year was transportation. And like Saddleback, we are also in partnership with OCTA to try and institute the College Pass Program, which will allow students to pay a one-time fee in the beginning of each semester, which would dramatically reduce costs for transportation. And as well, I've spoken a little bit about it throughout meetings here, we did move into our new Student Activity Center, and this is a space nearly double the size to our last one. And it also is now hosting our computer lab, a new game room, as well as a meditation room for a safe space for worship. And we're very excited with the potential expansion that's coming forward, and we believe that's laying the groundwork for our ASG forward in the next year. Thank you. And if there's any questions?
Are these old, these new questions, or from the last report? Trustee Melchiker?
Yeah, yeah. So, that was an excellent report also. So are you, are you initiating the, did I understand it correctly that you're initiating opt-out next year? So Saddleback College started it this year, and you're initiating it next year?
No, we initiated this year as well, and that also led to a large increase in our funding. So we did meet.
Okay, so you both, you both started at the same time? Okay, great. And so how much extra revenue did you, were able to get from having the, does everyone understand the opt-out program? Okay, I think we do. Okay, do you, which amount of revenue did you achieve more than you had before the opt-out program? With, with the implementation of the opt-out program? Thank you.
So with the opt-out program, we were projecting $120,000 to be received, and that was actually met as well. And do you want to speak to a little bit as well?
And as of also, originally, as compared to previous year before we implemented opt-out, we only received around 100, we only received around $50,000, $55,000 from the sales of the ASIVC sticker sales. And when we transitioned, we saw over 100,000 increase in revenue.
That's good. That's good. Congratulations.
Any other questions?
That's all right now.
Okay. Trustee Lang.
Yes, all. Hold on. There we go. So I'll ask the same question that I had for Saddleback here, in just trying to reconcile the numbers between the adopted budget and where we think you're going to come in, in terms of final numbers for 2018 and 19. If I'm looking at the, assuming that the tentative budget numbers reflect probably where you're going to come in for 2018-19, looks like the big increase was the, in the access sales that we talked about, that you're predicting. But I have to assume that in order to get to that beginning fund balance, most of that is going to be a carryover in unspent funds in the different expense categories. And can, can you tell me where it is that we haven't spent the funds that would give rise to that amount of beginning balance?
So, we, as you know, we generally give our, we generally give out funding to clubs and co-curricular programs, and also to programs of ASG. So any of those programs that do not spend the money we allocate them, the money for, all that money comes straight back to us. So it could be like a conference they didn't go to, or a certain activity that they never hosted. The money we allocate to them comes right back to us, and we put it back into the beginning balance for next year.
So eventually, would we, would we be able to figure out when we report the final numbers, specifically what that, where, where that is?
Yes. When we do get the final numbers, we do know exactly who spent what, and then we do take that into account whenever we make our budget allocation.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further que, oh, yes, please.
Sessa Hurd Johnson, ASG advisor. I just wanted to remind trustee Lang that last year you mentioned that you would like to see more of a detailed budget at the end of, or at the adopted budget section. So we plan on, and been working with Saddleback to plan on providing a little bit more detail so you'll know actually, line item by line item, who spent what, so we'll know how much contributed to that. So as a part of the adopted budget in August, we will be presenting that to the board.
Terrific. I think that would be very helpful for us to really understand and, you know, what the, what makes up the budget numbers a little bit better.
Thank you, Sessa. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, both.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we're on 4.2, we have a presentation on the Community College Chancellor's Office on Local Vision Goal Setting.
Okay, good evening trustees and chancellor Burke. I'm Denise Enziang, District Director of Research Planning and Data Management, and I'm joined by my colleagues, Dr. Jennifer Klein and Dr. Loris Fagioli, the directors at the colleges for research planning and accreditation. What we're going to talk about tonight, you're familiar with the Vision for Success, and this piece of it is the adoption locally, our district and college adoptions of goals. So I'm going to just highlight, many people are familiar with the main goals of the Vision for Success. These are the five goals that you're familiar with, which is all around increasing completion by 20% for associates and degrees and certificates, increasing 35% the number of transfers to UC and CSU, decreasing the average number of units from approximately 87 to 79, increase the percentage of CTE students who report being employed in the field from the most recent statewide average of 68% to improving it to 76. And I just wanted to note what you had in your packet, those were adjusted by the state chancellor's office, so you, I think you had 60% to 69, so that the, in the recent data, they have 68 to 76%. And then lastly, reducing the equity gaps across the above measures by 40%. So these were set by the, and adopted by the Board of Governors in 2017 to be accomplished in five years to 2022. So you recall last fall, these are very familiar to you, at your annual retreat with chancellor Burke, you reviewed the Vision for Success goals and integrated them within your own goals, so you have your first five goals there. And if you remember, we did it as an annual basis, since this was a new set of metrics, new goal setting for all colleges and districts, you looked at an annual goal setting for this next academic year going to December of 2019. If you remember, we had only internal data, the state chancellor's office hadn't released their baseline data yet, so we based it on our own internal assumptions around how much we thought we could, we could reach within a year and a half. So just to go quickly, you remember it was increasing at least 5% for degrees and certificates, increasing 8% for transferring, and we adjusted that to be transferring not to just UC and CSUs but to privates as well. We talked about including privates in, in your own goals, increasing the percent of CTE students being employed. And again, that data was a little bit, we weren't quite sure how that methodology, so you just had an increase, and so we'll, we'll show that, the colleges will talk a little bit more about that. Decrease the average number of units, so we were shooting for that 79 decrease, so it was a 3% annually. And then again, researching the equity gaps and report back to the board, so really giving that back to the colleges. I think last month you heard about their equity plans and where they were identifying the gaps that they were going to be working on to address the achievement gaps. And then the last three goals were, were ones that you particularly put into your plan. These were not necessarily aligned with the Vision for Success, but you remember it was addressing lifelong learning, emeritus, researching non-academic barriers, which we've been talking about, and reviewing the current status for ATAP. So those, those were your goals that you set in the fall of last year. So you guys were ahead of the game. So this diagram shows what the state chancellor's office was recommending to, to all colleges and districts. What they said was, in fall, please make sure your board is aware of, of these Vision for Success goals, that you're talking about it, that you're integrating it, and you embraced it and you put it into your own goal-setting process. So, and then the rest of the timeline was for the colleges to look at adopting these goals into their own planning processes, and they gave between November to April to look at their own internal processes and figure out where they were in their own strategic planning to align these goals. And so that's what I'm going to hand off to my colleagues, they're going to talk about the process that they went through in setting their own local goals to align with the Vision for Success.
All right, so we recognize that the Board of Trustees took an annualized approach to setting the goals. Again, this is your first foray at trying to figure out what good goals would be for the Vision for Success, so we recognized that and we assessed those goals. We also looked at the state chancellor's office broader goals for everybody, very aspirational. And then we let, excuse me, we recognized that the state chancellor's office sent a memo to us reminding us to be very ambitious, maybe a little bit aggressive, but definitely aspirational. We also looked at focus areas for the college, so we have options to adopt all of the sub-areas of the goals if we want to or not, and so there, there are some differences between the colleges, and that really just reflects back to areas that we want to take more opportunity on, and all of those kinds of focus areas are going to be articulated in our strategic planning and ed master planning processes. We definitely went through a consensus process, we talked about this at our executive leadership teams and all of our consultation council and other planning groups. IVC went through the same process as well. Our key takeaways from this process is that it's really important to continue to have integration and parity across the colleges and the district. This is very foundational to our strategic and master planning process. There's going to be a lot of change, we constantly hear about changes to the funding formula, but we're holding on to these goals, hoping that this gives us some stability. However, the state chancellor's office has recognized that they are amenable to annual realignment, so if we're completely off after a year in all of our forecasts of our goals, we obviously have the ability to change and do so. And we also recognize that any of these metrics in their number, calculation, appearance may change, but we're steady, excuse me, holding steadfast to adopting these goals in all of our planning and master planning process.
Here is the summary now, on the very left side you see the Vision for Success goals, the Board of Trustees, trustees' goals, Saddleback and Irvine Valley College goals. And as you see in number one, goal completion, transfer, and as well as the equity we match across the board. From Vision for Success, we've adopted the same thing. There is minor variations with number three and number four. The average unit decrease both, both from the Vision for Success, Board of Trustees and Irvine Valley Colleges down to 79. Saddleback is a little bit lower to 72, they've also taken an annual target, and once you extrapolated over the six years, it went down to 72. Similar with workforce, when IVC adopted the 76%, the state chancellor's office only had that as an option, and in more recent iterations, they also added two additional options that Saddleback chose to take on. Within the number four goals, only one was required, but Saddleback has a focus on CTE, they have a lot of CE programs, and they've chosen that to, as an emphasis area in their target setting. And that was it, we're open for questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Do we have any questions? Well, I will kick it off, I guess, seeing no other questions. I know we have the plans for approval in the general action section, so maybe we can ask questions now and not repeat the questions then. Two, I guess, questions come to mind, Jennifer, you mentioned being aspirational, so I'm not trying to put you on the spot, or we all can collectively answer, I mean, we're looking at what we adopted as our goals, I don't know that we were aspirational, I think we were realistic. How would you, it seems like our, our goals are going to be met, correct? The Board of Trustees' goals.
Oh, well, we're going to definitely try. Elliot, do you want to?
Maybe it's directed at, at the college presidents. From what I read, it looks like the, the goals that we adopted are going to be met. Is that, chancellor, your assessment?
If one projects forward, yes, and many of our goals were determined, or at least vetted, by looking at extrapolations from the trends that we've seen up until now, and knowing that these are reasonable trends that we can project forward. There is a diminishing rate of return on some of these initiatives, so projecting the same sort of improvements year after year is in some ways very aspirational and very ambitious. So we think they're reasonable targets, and we think for the faculty and staff to have something to celebrate each year, and at the end of this period, it's important that that target be reasonable.
Okay. Glenn, did you want to say anything?
I'll add a little bit to that, in terms of the units, we have to realize that, you know, some of the programs are, you know, well over 79 units, and so it takes a little bit of time to begin to, to pull that back and, and align it and, and not destroy the program in doing that. So we, we have probably the best two research departments in all of the community colleges in California, and they've put a lot of analysis in this, so I have full trust that we're going to make our numbers.
Okay, I guess I have two other questions. One is, we did ident, one of our goals was to research and ID, identify achievement gaps and report back to the board on plans to reduce those gaps, are, are we going to get a report by the end of the year or by a certain date?
I think one large portion is also on your agenda today is the equity plan. Obviously, the equity plan is directly linked to the Vision for Success, it matches the 40% gap, and that is outlined in the equity gap in much more detail, what the equity gap groups are, what the, the targeted groups are, what the activities are. So we believe the equity cap, the equity plan is, is kind of the more nuanced level to goal number five.
No, I appreciate that, but I don't think that's the, is that considered the report back to the board or?
So they did a presentation on the equity gaps last time, so you may want to go back and look at that.
Okay.
And see, you know, if you want something additional to what was reported in those. And then you see in the goal setting, for example, Saddleback has identified the Latinx community as one that they would focus on. And IVC is still narrowing theirs down, it looks like.
Okay, so we'll, I mean, I will go back and maybe we should all go back and take a look at the, the plan from last month, last month that was presented, the report, and see if it meets up with what we thought our goal was.
You'll find that at 4.1 from last month.
We'll do that. And then last question is, I noticed some wage data was, I don't know, was it look at Glenn or to you? Wage data was missing on the IVC side, is, will that wage data be populated at some point?
So the wage data is available, but it was not part of the goal setting from the state chancellor's off, is, office in their initial publication, but then in their later publication, they added the living wage and the earnings as additional options. IVC, once we set the target, we chose to stay with the field of study target as the state chancellor's office has put in their Vision for Success, but we will, over the next year, look at these earnings and living wages. Similar to, or at IVC, we have smaller programs, and with smaller programs, it's very difficult, the numbers jump up from one year to the next, so it's very difficult to do projections. Saddleback has larger, more robust CE programs, so for them, it might be slightly easier to project out and making these targets. And at IVC, we, we have two large data projects over the summer and the fall to hopefully have more data on our students to make a more justified and reasonable target setting.
And if I understand it correctly, they only needed to adopt in one of the areas. So Saddleback adopted in three, IVC adopted in one, but that still meets the current requirements.
From the chancellor's office.
The state chancellor's office, yes.
Okay. Trustee Witt.
I have a question, Denise, you mentioned in number three, increase in percentage of existing CTEs. I understand the study is young, so we can't, but in just the short time that you've been investigating, do you have any idea of the number of CTEs that we're talking about students?
In goal, in your goal three?
Yeah.
Okay, so let me just go back right here. Yeah, it's based on the CTE outcome survey, so the campuses are administering that survey, and so I think when we initially looked at it, that data, we didn't have the detailed data, but you guys are using, both campuses are using that survey, so.
Okay.
Is that answering your question?
Well, I was curious, are we talking about 200, are we talking about 50, I mean, CTEs close to my heart, because I think it's really important.
Yeah, it's, it's small in terms of couple hundred returning that survey, so the goal, both campuses, we're talking about, how do we increase the participation of that, of that survey?
So you have that problem, that's huge, you know, for them to return that survey.
So we actually are embarking on a study of unitary level data with a company called EMSI. They actually have a corporate partnership with Equifax, and they, they can batch all of our students' data, and we will get and return their salaries and jobs. We plan on sending as much as we can to them for a variety of different reasons. And this project is actually going to take place regionally, and, and when we started on it, we were thinking we would actually go to the state and advocate for this tool to replace the other, but now it's already catching on, and so we're, this is our summer project, is batching this data and looking at how our students doing, you know, if they take one CTE class, two, three, four, however, so.
How do you evaluate that and survey that from one CTE to someone who takes several CTEs?
Well, actually, the data is just available with Equifax, so we just batch out the information to them and they return it back to us, we don't have to ask the student.
Oh, you don't have to have the student check that off when they do the CTE?
That's correct, yeah.
How'd you get that done? That's cool. Data. Thank you.
All right, I don't see any for the questions, I want to thank the three of you for your presentation this evening. Okay, we're now moving on to our consent calendar, 5.0, the consent calendar items, does that, do any trustees have any pulls? I am going to pull 5.2. Any other pulls? Oh, all right, so we'll entertain a motion to move the item, motion trustee Lang, and a second from trustee Jay, any other questions? If not, let's go ahead and vote on the item. Whoa.
It's not on yet.
Something happened. Well, we now have a motion. We have different mover and a different seconder now, trustee Witt and a second from trustee Milchek.
Yeah, I noticed it was open, so I put it, plugged it in.
You're back as the, you're back as the mover, Dave. And second from trustee Jay. Why don't we just? So is there something wrong with the system now? We might. Oh, all right, so let's go ahead and vote. Someone hasn't voted, unless it's a system issue. We have, the balance of the consent items are approved by six to zero trustee yes vote, one trustee absent, and a student. You can vote any way you want. And a student trustee yes vote. All right, I pull 5.2, not because I'm opposed to it, in fact, I'm strongly supportive of it, it's, has to do with resolutions regarding three of our outstanding classified staff. So item 5.2 in this month's agenda recognizes formal resolutions given by the Board of Trustees to honor extraordinary achievements as well as those who provide honorable and lasting contributions to students, the community, or education. The honorees will accept their board resolution and will be recognized for their achievement at their respective college campus. This month, we are honoring our outstanding classified staff of the year. This month, we are honoring our outstanding classified staff of the year. Lois Schwartz of District Services, is she here? Craig Connor from Saddleback College, and Rachel Manders from Irvine Valley College. Congratulations to Lois, Craig, and Rachel for this well-deserved recognition. We thank you for your dedication to our students, our colleges, and our district. And without further delay, we need a motion to approve these resolutions. We have it. You're right. Motion trustee Lang and a second from trustee Jay. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Congratulations. All right, moving on. General action item, 6.1, Saddleback College and IVC Student Government Tentative Budgets. We already had presentations on both and questions. We have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Wright. Any other questions? Probably not. Let's go ahead and vote. The budget's carry by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.2, the California Community College Chancellor's Office Local Vision Goal Setting. Again, we saw presentations from the district in both colleges on this. We have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Jay to approve these visions. Any other questions? Let's go ahead and vote. The item carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.3, annual approval for student trustee to receive compensation and to make and second motions for board meetings. We have a motion to approve this from trustee Jay and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. Oh, you do, trustee Lang.
Yes, just had a quick question. I'm assuming this is the determination of the exact dollar amount. Is that based on a percentage? I mean, I'm just wondering, $393.75? Seems like we could have rounded up to $400, but it's based on some formula, I understand.
So she would like to do that?
Yes.
And it's based on what you had approved earlier in the year as a specific dollar amount?
Oh.
Because we had to revisit all of that in the fall.
Okay, but I'm guessing it was as a percentage. We wouldn't have on our own come up with $393.75.
No, that was the dollar amount that was approved specifically for the student trustee in that agenda item earlier.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, we have a motion and a second, so let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.4, Saddleback College and IVC Student Equity Plans. Approve the 2019 through 2022 student equity plans for Saddleback and IVC. Motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions on this item? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.5, Saddleback College Regional Strong Workforce Mended Participation Agreement, which I think talks about a reduction in funding to Saddleback, correct? Yep. All right, we have motion on this from trustee Witt and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions from the trustees? Nope, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.6, Saddleback College Vocational Cosmetology, Cosmetician Education Services Agreements, Amendments. A motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Jay and a question from trustee Witt.
Yes, I looked this over, and I remember this coming to us two years ago. I was just curious, and I know that we look at monies, but we're talking about 15 cents for two of the programs, and the ratings, I was looking at the ratings also. Can anyone explain to me why the rating, I mean, we're talking about a significant 12% increase in a rating here, over 15 cents an hour? If no one's here to explain it, I'll wait till next time. It's on Exhibit H, page one of one, so it's quite a few pages back, after the contract. Yeah, the first page after the contract, and how it was decided upon for the submittals. That's what it is. I just did a quick look on the internet, and I just thought, well, if this rating, you're meaning the rating of overall of what they can produce, I didn't think 15 cents an hour was such a big deal. Do you see it? Page one of one? It's the last page. There you go, it's the last page before 6.7.
Trustee Witt, I'm sorry, but I'm having a hard time understanding the question, so...
Well, the question is, why did we choose Santa Ana Beauty Academy?
We didn't. We chose them all.
They're all, they've all been selected.
Where did I miss that? Oh, I kept reading, I didn't look at the...
There are four of them.
There are four of them?
Yeah.
Because the one that we selected last time was not selected this time, I don't think. Or is that the one from New America Beauty from Lagoon? Actually, that's in orange.
And that's also on our list.
Okay, all righty then, because I looked them up, and they were all pretty good. Sorry about that.
They are. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for that. I just had a quick question. I noticed the item was submitted by Ann Marie, but I assume it was developed with Saddleback College. Yeah?
It was.
Okay.
Yeah, there was some cleanup of contracts, and I have to say, for the first time, tying the compensation to hourly rates and hours of teaching.
Okay.
Also, thank you for keeping the amount. I remember two years ago, that was the same amount, so thank you.
All right, seeing no further questions, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.7, Saddleback College Community Education Emeritus Institute and K-12 Partnerships MOU with SVUSD, Saddleback Valley Unified School District. We have a motion from trustee Witt and a second from trustee Jay. Any questions? All right, good job. Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6. Well, I'm just going to go back, just a quick, ah, it's all right, forget it. I didn't ask it. I had a question, but I'll follow up later. 6.8 is Saddleback College Community Education Emeritus Institute, K-12 Partnership Facility Use Agreement with SVUSD. We have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.9, Instruction Service Agreement Customized Not-for-Credit Training with Amazon.com. We have a motion from trustee Witt and a second from trustee Milchker. Do we have any questions? I have a question, then. How many Amazon employees will this involve?
I do not know. Allow me to consult with my vice president. Do you have any idea? I saw Kareem.
Trustee Lang.
Exhibit A, page five of six, it shows what the minimum-maximum class sizes are for the different courses, so I think that would probably maybe give us some idea of the number of students that would be involved.
I think I saw that, I just, I guess I was looking for... If you could follow up on that?
310, I'm being told.
Oh, 310, Amazon employees?
Yes.
Yeah, it's under the fee schedule, line number three on that same page. It says assumes 310 participants.
There we go.
Okay, so excellent. That'd be nice to know after the fact that if it ends up being 310.
Absolutely, and I want to emphasize, we view this as a foot in the door.
All right, good, very good. Okay, thank you for that. We have motion, and any other questions? We have motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.10, the grant award collaborative research NSF includes alliance STEMCor expansion subaward issuance to Stanford University. We have a motion from trustee Wright, second from trustee Witt, and a question from trustee Lang.
Yes, just a quick question. I noticed that there was substantial editing that occurred on this, on Stanford's part, and I, unfortunately, Vice Chancellor Gable isn't here, so I perhaps won't be able to understand whether, obviously, these changes must have been acceptable to us, and I'm assuming it was kind of along the line of also getting our foot in the door here with Stanford to basically agree to not use whatever standard language we would ordinarily use in these kind of contracts. Can you elaborate on that at all?
You pretty much have answered the question, and if I remember specifically trustee Lang, it was around hold harmless and indemnification language.
Yeah.
Which is always controversial when we ask other major institutions to adopt our language.
Got it, okay. Thank you for that. Just had a quick question. Can someone do a one-sentence summary of what the grant is supposed to do? I understand it's STEM-related, I'm very familiar with STEM programs, both youth and adult. I just, I looked through it, and I just, maybe I missed it, I was just having a hard time trying to understand what is the goal of the grant.
Several years back, we started a program called Bridge to Engineering, which created a support program for students going into STEM that are first-generation, underrepresented. Over the years, we have worked to secure this grant, which would then have us create a network of other colleges to expand that same program into their schools and their So we are now kind of leading the effort to replicate our program into other community colleges throughout the country.
I see.
Yeah, the NSF is funding it, and we're just, we're the lead agency to facilitate that.
Okay.
Trustee Jamal.
I'm still a little confused, but, well, I'm supportive of the grant, I'm glad we've got it, but.
Yes.
We'll see the progress as it moves ahead, but go ahead.
And the model is based on modern pedagogy, use of active learning pedagogy, and an intrusive advising model with more support for students that are at a lower ratio than what we normally provide.
Okay. Trustee Lang, did you have another question?
Sounds very admirable.
Yeah.
You're achieving the goal.
I do, too. All right, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.11, authorize the purchase of Cisco Network Equipment Warranty of Hardware Maintenance Repair Services Software, Software Maintenance, E+ Technology, Inc. Have motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Witt. Any questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Oh, there it goes. Motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.12, contract for IT consultancy with Gartner, Inc. We have a motion trustee Lang and a second from trustee Jay. Do we have any questions? I have a question. So I'm very familiar with Gartner, and I was just wondering, are we getting access to any of Gartner's data services? For example, they have a fabulous program called Talent Neuron, which provides extremely valuable data on wages, industries, and job openings that is amazing, but I was wondering if we, that's one example, are we getting access to any of their data-related services?
We haven't used that particular service. Mostly what we use are the research library to start, to then drill down and have calls with experts. Then we have them review our RFPs, then when we get a contract with a vendor, they do contract reviews. Those are the primary services we utilize with Gartner.
So what I suggest is that probably maybe someone from the district and the two colleges get a demonstration of Gartner's data services related to employment, jobs, and workforce in this area. They'll do the demo for free, and maybe the deans and the, you know, the directors of workforce development can take a look at it. There is a cost to it, so I'm always mindful of costs, but I think they may want to take a look at the demo, so.
Good advice, thank you.
All right, thank you. Trustee Witt.
Is it fair to ask how often these databases are examined by us?
I've been told by the Gartner representative on the West Coast that we were the heaviest users of research of Gartner on the West Coast.
Do you happen to know what that means?
That means, it depends on the products and the procurements that we're doing, but typically, we might start off with what's called a magic quadrant, which ranks all the vendors in a given space. Then you drill down from that into individual research on each of those vendors. Then you look at what are called hype cycles, which are projections of the arc trajectory of the adoption and use of that technology. So, yeah, we make pretty heavy use of the research library, usually at the beginning of a project, so that we can make a list of questions to contact the experts with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. The item carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.13, a variety of board policy revisions for review and study. We have a motion from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Witt. Any questions? Trustee Lang.
The only one I had, this is really minor, but Board Policy 1311, which is the first one in there. So we've scratched out the references to civic centers, because apparently, that's not nomenclature that we use on our campus, and yet, we've sort of kept that in the title. So that seemed a little bit inconsistent to me, I guess, even, and then we also refer to use of district civic centers, so that confused me a little bit, I guess.
Good question. Maybe Chancellor, do you want to answer that? Or, I know Ann Marie's not here, I think that was an issue we addressed with her in the subcommittee.
No.
But, no, but it's a good question.
I think the removal of those first two sentences is just because it's redundant, because, so it just starts, "The Chancellor shall establish practices." Because lower, you'll see, the use of the district civic centers will only be blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
So trustee Lang, if I can interject, I think it's a really good question. When we had the Board Policy Subcommittee, the way Ann Marie or Vice Chancellor Gable told us is that, I think we even asked her about civic center being the title, and she said it's in code, that we have to do it that way. That's what I remember her saying.
I concede.
All right. Any other questions? Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We are now at six point one four, the Academic Employee and Classified Administrator Personnel Actions Regular Items. Any changes?
No changes.
No changes to the item? Do we have a motion trustee Wright, a second from trustee Jay, and a question from trustee Milchker?
I just wanted to note that.
Your mic.
Mark?
My mic.
Thank you. That very, very longtime employee, Mark McNeil, who has been teaching economics since before I was born, is going to be retiring and we'll miss him very much, so that's what I thought I would mention. Thank you.
He began in nineteen eighty.
Nineteen eighty?
He's been with us a very long time.
Yeah, before I was born, see?
Before you were on the board, unbelievably, yes. You set it up.
And how long has the Japanese professor been teaching?
Since two thousand, August two thousand and five.
Five, okay, okay, thanks. So they're two longtime professors. Mark McNeil is the one that really has been teaching for many, many years.
And he's a really good guy.
He's a really, really good guy, great teacher, he really is. So that's why, that's why I pulled him off and mentioned him. I like him. You're right.
You good?
Yeah, thank you so much, thank you.
So let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and student trustee yes vote. Six point one five, faculty conversion to Canvas, the stipends, they keep coming up. Is there a motion to approve? Motion trustee Jay and a second from trustee Witt. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by a five to one trustee vote with a student trustee yes vote. Six point one six, classified personnel actions, regular items.
No changes.
No changes to the item. Motion from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Witt. Seeing no questions, let's go ahead and vote. Think someone needs to vote. There we go. Motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point one seven, non-bargaining unit personnel actions.
No changes.
No changes to the item. We have a motion from trustee Jay. Do we have a second? We have a second from trustee Milchker. Any questions? Seeing no questions, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point eight, Equal Employment Opportunity Plan for two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-two.
Trustee Jamal, this particular one was missing in your packet and trustee Milchker's packet. The multiple measures that's a part Exhibit B was discussed this afternoon when we trained you on EEO plan and the EEO compliance. And then along with that, Exhibit A is the actual EEO plan that's going to be approved by the board hopefully tonight.
Correct, and I could think that's why I was handed the plan.
And trustee Milchker. So conspicuously.
Oh, here it is. I see it, I see it now. Thank you, thank you.
Will you aim to please?
It just appeared. This is the second, amazing. It's like magic, you know?
Magical, but it's an important plan.
It's a very important plan, and obviously, our district has work to do, but we're dedicated to getting that done, and we have an excellent EEO committee that's in place to advise the district and to keep revising the plan.
And thank you for doing the training today, by the way.
You're welcome.
All right, we have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions on the EEO plan? Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point one nine, destruction of Class III disposable records. We have a motion from trustee Jay and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. And the item carries by six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. All right, our final item under general action, to change the date of the regular board meeting from July twenty-ninth to July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. The, we have motion trustee Milchker and a second from trustee Jay. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by a six to zero trustee yes vote and student trustee yes vote. We're now into seven point oh reports. Saddleback College and IBC speakers. Seven point two, staff response to public comments from the previous board meeting. Seven point three, facilities plan status report. Trustee Wright?
I did have one question. I wanted to find out what's the status on the science math building as far as the assessment? How is it going? How close to completion is it as to what's happened?
You think of the ATS building, you mean?
No, the science math building.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, sorry.
So I'm not from facilities, but I'll do my best, trustee Wright. We did have an assessment done by a professional consultancy.
Right.
The end result of that showed that the building is probably better off demolished and rebuilt from scratch than renovated. Not a surprise to us, and we submitted an FPP, a final proposal, for the state to try to rebuild a new beautiful science and math building under the auspices of the state, and we're very hopeful that that will be a good proposal.
Okay, thank you. Because I worry about that building because of the rain and all of the damage that the rains cause.
The consultant did raise several safety concerns, and we've addressed those.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Witt?
My question, like always, is on the ATS building. It's not really a question, but everyone, if you just look at the history, I mean, look at the different dates, it has been slapped around so much, and I meant to say that. Can you just give me a report or summarize? I see that's in front of me. Somebody's kind words on this.
It looks like Brandy Delena is coming to the podium.
Hi, trustee Witt.
Hi.
So we are working on the design right now on the ATS building. We, the ATS building will be located where the, well, the tennis courts are currently located. So this project is both a tennis court renovation and an ATS building renovation. And the tennis courts are going to the Division of the State Architect. The design of those tennis courts are going, I believe it's June, around June twentieth, and then about two, three months later, we're going for the building. So the design is fully progressing for both of those aspects of the project, and we're making headway.
Where's the hangup?
Excuse me?
The hangup, the hangup before, it says here, the projected budget differs from the basic aid allocations that we had. So you say we're going forward, but is it going forward still to two thousand, what was it, two thousand twenty-two?
Twenty-two, I guess.
August two thousand twenty-two is when the building would be complete.
Okay. All right.
When are we going to break ground for it?
Um, let's see, we're, complete working drawings, yes, when September twentieth is, two thousand twenty is when we anticipate the DSA approval on that building, and then we'll go, we'll be breaking ground soon after that.
DSA.
Long time reviews.
Okay, any other questions on this, trustee Witt?
No.
Okay, thank you. Seven point four is the monthly financial status report. Seven point five is quarterly investment report. Seven point six, pension stabilization trust fund. Seven point seven, the retiree OPEV trust fund. And now we're on to reports from the administration and governance groups. And leading us off is Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Thank you. The architect Mies van der Rohe said, "Less is more," and I'll try and honor that with my thank yous tonight, but I don't think I'll make it, so. First of all, thank you to our amazing students for all of their dedication, intelligence, perseverance, and hard work. Thank you to our student leadership and to Perry Mead, our ASG president, and I would suggest maybe our US president, 2040. Thank you to our excellent faculty and dedicated classified employees for all of your hard work. Second, thank you to our deans and district and college administration, especially our new president, Dr. Elliott Stern, our VPIs Trambu Komamoto and Juan Avalos and Corey Waltham, for their leadership and their vision that is moving our college forward. Thank you to our faculty association and Kurt Meyer, and thank you to Cindy Viscachill, both of them, for all of their hard work this year on the faculty contract. And then third, thank you to our board of trustees, to Terry Witt, Marsha Milchker, James Wright, Tim Jamal, TJ Prendergast, Barbara J., David Lang, and Martha Uriarte, welcome. And thank you to Kathleen Burke, our chancellor, for your wisdom and leadership and support of our colleges. Thank you.
Thank you. What a pleasant report this evening, Blake.
It's my last meeting.
We will miss you.
I'll be back.
Yeah, we know.
I'll be back.
Okay, Faculty Association. That's gonna be a tough one to beat, Kurt.
Well, I also echo Blake Stevens' thanks, but I find he falls a little too short. I do want to thank the trustees and the chancellor and the college presidents and VPs for attending and contributing to the many worthwhile events on both campuses. When the administration and staff and faculty and members of the community come together to support students, that's when we flourish as community colleges. As my first eventful year serving as the Faculty Association president is coming to a close, I want to thank everyone whom I've had the pleasure to work with. Chancellor Burke, who's reached out and back to me on several important matters. Each of our trustees, whom I've had the opportunity to get to know and to talk with individually. The vice chancellors, especially Vice Chancellor Dr. Cindy Viscachill and her staff, with whom the Faculty Association and I have worked closely on numerous matters, from the contract to safety to personnel. Other district leadership, including Priya Jerome and Tony Brady and Risk Management, campus police and Chiefs Higa and Meyer, college presidents Rockmore and Stern, the VPs and administrators of both colleges, the two academic senators and their presidents, the foundations and the staff, right, the unsung heroes who do yeoman's work at both of our colleges, and of course, our amazing students, including outgoing ASG presidents Matt and Perry, who, as trustee Milchker observed, have truly made a difference on both campuses. I want to welcome student trustee Uriarte and her commitment to representing the interests and aspirations and goals of the students of both campuses. We support you and your vision and know you'll be great, and I would be remiss without not thanking my colleagues of the Faculty Association, past president Mark Bleth and president-elect and chief negotiator Louis Long, secretary Parisa Soltani, treasurer Frank Gonzalez, membership chair Jenny Langrell, and part-time chair Beth Clary. They are the best mentors someone like me could hope for, so thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. But you're still president for another year, correct?
Yes. This is correct.
Yay.
Very good.
Excellent.
All right. Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services?
This month, District IT released new versions of two popular programs. The new phase of, it's called Schedule Builder. It's going to help students register for classes even more easily than they did before. And second, a new version of my academic plan, MAP two point oh. MAP has already been used by our students to create over three-quarters of a million academic plans. I want to thank everyone that helped us with that. It's faculty, staff, and students from both colleges. Especially, I want to thank our student design team.
Thank you for that. Vice Chancellor Viscachill, Vice Chancellor of HR.
Welcome and congratulations to our student trustee. Also, congratulations to all of the students that will be graduating on Friday, this Friday, and to the faculty and classified staff that helped them get there. I want to specifically thank and acknowledge Executive Director Kim Wittis, who did a fantastic job overseeing human resources for the three weeks I was out on leave, and possibly they don't even need me for those three weeks. I was not called one time. But I do want to thank the HR staff for holding it all together, in particular, the executive director. And I want to thank the board, chancellor's executive cabinet, and both leaderships of both unions for the love and support sent my way. It was overwhelming, and I appreciate it.
Well, we're glad to have you back with us. We missed you, sort of. No, we missed you. We did. I missed you. We have president of the IBC Classified Senate, Maria Nunez.
Okay, well, I haven't been gone, and I'm still here next month, so I'm just gonna tell you what we have going on this month. On Monday, June third, we are going to be holding our Spring two thousand nineteen Professional Development Summit over at the Doug Club. We've been doing these for about three years now. They started out as just a place for classified staff who went on a conference somewhere to come back and report out to their fellow classified. And then, just due to the surveys that we had at the end, we started having topics, and it kind of evolved into this, so. It's gonna be a full day. We're also going to be doing our recognition luncheon that afternoon as well, so. Other than that, we're just getting ready for graduation, and that's about it.
Thank you. Saddleback College Classified Senate?
No report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and as always, bringing us home, CSEA President Scott Green, who always walks in right as he's about to present. If anyone hasn't, it's not gone unnoticed. Good timing.
I have absolutely perfect timing. I want to welcome student trustee Uriarte. Thank you for stating your dedication to students. I want to thank the board of trustees for their resolution in recognizing the Classified School Employees Week, which is this week. I can't say enough about the classified employees and what they do to support the faculty, to work with the administrators, to work with managers, and most of all, to really be dedicated to helping and supporting our students for student success. This week, as we celebrate the hard work of many of our graduates, this is the week that the classified staff really come together to try to make this week successful at our campuses. And we look forward to commencement on Friday, and I can't say enough about our classified staff. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Enjoy commencements and have a good evening.